Okay, we are broadcasting, we're live, we're going to call to order the Tuesday, October 20th meeting of the sanitary district two board of directors. We are about to adjourn to closed session, the item is anticipated litigation. First, we will take public comments on the closed session item. Is there any public comment? I do not see any attendees on the line. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comment?
We have not received any emails public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we are going to leave this zoom link and reconvene in our private closed session zoom link, and we will come back here to report out of closed session. Once we are ready. Thank you. The board of directors for sanitary district two is reporting out of our closed session. We have nothing to report and there is no other agenda items for this meeting. So we're going to adjourn this meeting and convene the October 20th meeting of the Cora Madera Town Council. This meeting is going to also start with a closed session. The item is a performance evaluation for the town manager. So we are all going to adjourn to that closed session now, and we will come back to report out of that before the beginning of the public portion of our meeting.
But we do need to see if there's any public comments on the item first.
Thank you, Rebecca. We need to take public comment on the on the matter of our closed session, which is that performance review. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via zoom or email public comment at TCM mail.org. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments?
We did not receive any email public comments, and I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Perfect, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and adjourn to close session. Thank you. We are calling to order the public portion of the Tuesday, October 20th meeting of the Cora Madera Town Council. Council member Ravazia will be joining us shortly, but we're going to begin the meeting now. All right, Rebecca, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kancisa? Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Ravazia? You said he will be joining shortly. Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes.
Rebecca.
Here, thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Now it is open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public who would like to comment on an item that's not on our agenda. To do so, speakers will be given three minutes per person. We are going to call speakers who have raised their hands via zoom, and we can also read out any public comments for open time that were emailed to us. We will start with Roy Wolford.
Evening. There's two items that I want to address. The first is the project home key. The town council must insist for the project to move forward on compensation for lost revenue and the subsequent reduction in services for residents. There's a transit occupancy tax, sales tax, like restaurants and that sort of thing that we're going to lose out on. And if we use $30,000 a year times 50 years, it's one and a half million dollars. If we look at the sales tax, $20,000 a year, 50 years, that's another million, that's two and a half million lump sum payment that should be presented by the homeless project. It was mentioned last night that the homeless projects projects have a budget of $600 million from the state. There's plenty of money to cover the lost revenues. It's not fair to the residents of Cora Madera to take that money out of their pocket and reduce services. One more thing, the low income homeless housing in Larkspur on King Street that was mentioned many times last night, that property is being leased to Homeward Bound by St. Patrick's Church. So compensation compensating Cora Madera for lost revenue is not unreasonable. Second item, the Marin Board of Supervisors position of approval propositions 15, 16, 17, 18, and 25 is very disappointing to save the late, say the least. Prop 15, clear attack on Prop 13. The residents on welfare, low income, middle income, who can least afford an additional cost burden on goods and services will be negatively impacted by businesses that will be forced to pay significantly higher taxes that will be passed along to the consumer. Prop 16 overturns Prop 209 that stopped institutional discrimination based on race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin. The way to stop discrimination is to stop discriminating. However, the supervisors believe the way to stop discrimination is to discriminate against people of Asian and European ancestry. Proposition 17 and 25, the supervisors approve of lawlessness and disorder. Proposition 18, the supervisors believe 17 year olds have the wisdom, experience, knowledge, common sense, and good judgment to counter their totally unreasonable parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. I do not see any other hands up for public comment during open time. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments for open time?
No, we have not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to move on to item three, which is a presentation from PG&E's Mark Van Gorder about PG&E's work with regards to community wildfire safety and the PSPS program.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, can you see and hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
I am coming to you from my home office here and apologize for the somewhat halo looking glow, but I guess I've been somewhat good. Um, thank you for your time this evening. I will try not to take too much of it. I have a couple things to share with you. One is basically an interactive map that people find helpful. I've been giving these presentations for the past. Well, some of these presentations have been going for over a year and a half, but they've improved over time. And so this interactive map that I'll begin to share here should be helpful. I like to do that. And then I have a brief sort of PDF or PowerPoint presentation. Mayor, can you let me know if you can see the Google Earth map that I've got here?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. All right. We'll dive right into it. I'll go quickly, please. I'll pause every now and then if you need me to go back and certainly I'll keep these slides up if at the end there's questions we need to come back to on this. But in effect, what you have here, and I apologize for looking away, I'm just my, I have two screens and this is the one that has the information. What we have here is the electric transmission lines that serve the county of Marin, and we'll zoom in and we'll get down to distribution. But the main point is that the larger the towers, the larger the lines, the more electricity they carry. And then it, as it comes down through Northern California and branches out, just as you see here, it steps down through substations and eventually gets to various substations in Marin. We have a number of them. The Ignacio up just south and east of Nevada at the 10137 interchange is the largest. And then we have substations Los Colinas, San Rafael, and then they keep coming down to Green Bray. The Alto is in Mill Valley. And finally, our last substation, Sausalito. And at those substations, the power then goes out in a much more spread out fashion through our distribution lines, which most people are familiar with as we call them power poles. Some people are more familiar with calling them telephone poles. Typically, we try and bundle the communications and electricity together. Main point here being the power is coming down, you know, really from the north, from these different transmission lines, comes into the Ignacio substation and then follows this path mostly along the run of the 101 corridor. And I point that out because we don't really expect to need to turn off the power to these larger transmission lines unless they're coming through areas like the Golden Gate National Recreation Area where they're deemed high fire threat district areas. And the California Public Utilities Commission creates these district maps. So as you can see, the line for Sausalito comes a fair bit up on top of these ridges where we have higher winds and then comes down into Sausalito. These are areas where we think that transmission lines may be shut off for public safety during high wind events this time of year, very low relative humidity, lots of fuel, dry fuel. So briefly, that's the transmission lines. Let's, let's get straight to your town of Cora Madera. I think, Mayor, you are sitting somewhere here, if I'm not mistaken.
Just to the left of that.
There we go. Um, I'm going to turn on the overhead electric distribution lines. Those will show up as orange. And we also have a number of underground electric distribution lines that will show up as green. So as you can see, there's a lot of underground here, and anyone driving the streets would probably be familiar that there, at least right here, there aren't electric poles, but there are, as you start to look out over the town. I just want to distinguish the difference between the green and the orange. And our objective for Cora Madera and other and all other areas is to continue providing power as much as we possibly can to the areas that are outside of these high fire threat district areas. We don't want to have energy or electric lines in areas where we have trees fall over, branches break off, or other things that could get into the lines, sometimes animals, and cause an ignition in areas where there's a lot of dry fuel going up hillsides in high wind events. So that really briefly, again, the substation that serves areas of Larkspur and and Cora Madera is this substation here, it's the Green Bray Substation. Some of you may have driven by it, though it is fairly well tucked away back here. Um, I'll get to it in a bit, but I will just say while we're looking at this, PG&E does have plans. Go ahead. I thought I heard a question. All right, my apology. Um, in the event, in the unlikely event, I would probably say that there is a problem with the transmission delivery to Green Bray. We do have plans to send generators to this location, locating them in here. Again, if this transmission line is turned off, it's not usable. We bring some generators in here to provide some generation to core critical services that we've worked out, you know, with the Office of Emergency Services and police, fire, et cetera. So that, I can come back to that. Any questions before I do move on to the, to the presentation, more static presentation? Hearing none. I will move through this again fairly quickly for two reasons. This has been provided both to the public. It's part of the city council's packets. I'm assuming it should be downloadable or can be. And I know everyone can read, so there will just be some areas here that I can key in on. Our goal is to make them smarter, shorter, and smaller, shorter, and smarter, sorry. And I can get into that in a little bit more detail later on, but that's our objective. We want to have fewer people impacted for less time and while doing so, giving people more resources at their disposal. These all highlight slides that are coming and talks about the work that we've completed in 2020 to meet our targets. This, this is, this map is why I use Google Earth to show the transmission lines. It just, this just doesn't quite do it justice. What I think is interesting is I often get the question, can PG&E give us all the data that is in, is in this feature on Google Earth? And unfortunately, the answer to that is no. But that, that information is available if somebody wants to take a look at our transmission lines and our substations and whatnot. This is a really handy and interesting link. By the way, a lot of these links, I emailed Mayor to you, to council members, to city clerks. I sent a vast number of people, 10 to 15 links that I think are the most helpful. And I have had, you know, Marin Builders Association is posting those on their websites. And I don't know if the city chooses to do so, there, there's a number of resources for the community to go look at. This is a handy one to take a look at how the power comes into town. New equipment that we've been installing that already existed, but we're installing more of it, we call them sectionalizers. And effectively, it's our way of opening up the, the circuit so that the energy can't continue to flow. You know, if it's, if it's closed, then the lines are powered and they continue to go. If we open it up, the electricity stops. And so we've chosen select points where we can keep the most customers on, keep their power on without allowing the power to flow up into those hillsides, as I mentioned. And this is just a quick, it's hard to read really here, but this is a quick snapshot that shows a number of the sectionalizing devices that we've installed. And we're going to continue to find more locations where those may be appropriate. These are just the substations that I mentioned. The generation that I talked about at the Green Bray Substation, if that transmission line is taken, is powered down, we will generate at the substation like I mentioned. Some folks may have heard or may drive by at some point, a temporary generation site that we have here in the unincorporated area, area in Marin of Marin City. There are a bank of generators here. That goes back to my point about the likelihood or the chance that this may be de-energized. And so we provided this setup here to power Sausalito, given some really significant challenges. So that is pre-staged. All other locations that we might need to bring generators to have generators currently sitting offsite in both Venetia and Vallejo, fully deployable within a matter of 48 hours, 24 hours to bring them to the stations and connect them and generate as needed. So then they are not sighted at the, at the substations. In the event, so I'll skip really quickly here. You may have also heard in the news that we have a public safety power shut off currently in play, not for Marin, but for, for parts of, well, a lot of, a lot of our service territory, but probably most closely, the Napa area. So again, these links, you don't need to write them down, but, but I sent them to you. This is our weather page. I check it two or three times a week, and those who are interested may want to as well. We're currently in a public safety power shut off watch. And we have this, our service territory broken down by zones. Marin County is in zone three. So one might think, aha, zone three, Marin County is in it. But the specific impacts are not going to be including Marin. There is another site where you can go to PG&E alerts and we can look at current outages. That's handy for people if they want to know, well, what's happening? I have an outage in my area. How do I find out more about that? This is a handy site to go to. And you know, you can, you can get information about the outages here. These are current. If you want to look at what areas may be impacted by future outages, use this tool here. As you see, nothing in Marin, but just in case anyone's interested, these are the larger areas that are expected this Thursday night, some Wednesday night, Thursday night into Friday morning. And then we expect the power to be restored late Friday night. Because you can see there's multiple locations in Napa County in the hillsides of both the East and West of the county. So in the event that we have a public safety power shut off, we have these community resource centers, some indoors, some outdoors, but to accommodate our COVID situation with social distancing and masks, but we provide a number of services there. This goes back to our PSPS updates that are just showing where people can get information about, you know, is there a PSPS event? Yes, there is. You know, are shut offs likely? And you can get current outage information here. There's also information about device charging and wifi support through the community resource centers. And we have a list of, of locations there for people to use. I often get questions from folks, well, what about people who have medical needs or CPAP devices or electric wheelchairs or any other electric devices? So we have a couple of things. Medical baseline is a program. It's an opt-in program. It's a discount program for PG&E customers. And it also helps for folks to get notifications who may be on what we call a master meter. So we have one single meter that may be feeding five or 10 or 200 homes, residents. Medical baseline program will, will help provide a discount to those people. And again, it helps them to get notifications. We do also have assistance working with California Independent Living Centers. And again, those links are all available in that long list that I sent to you and the clerk. But here's some other additional help, backup power, public safety power shut off updates, planning for emergencies, our safety action center. If people have questions, this is a handy number to call specific towards our wildfire safety program. People prefer email. I have found that typically customers can get a response within 24 hours or if not sooner. So that's my best I can do to go fast and provide a lot of information. I'm sure there, there may be some questions and I'm happy to answer them. But I cannot hear you.
Thank you. That was a very informative presentation. It's good to have that update on, on, you know, the work that PG&E has been doing and also helpful to have those kind of tools that are out there demonstrated to us so that we can, you know, learn more on our own. We're going to take public comment on your presentation, take questions from the public, and then we will do questions and comments from the council. So for public comment, Rebecca, were you going to say something?
Yes, thank you, Rebecca. I just wanted to let the council and the public know that this presentation has been uploaded to the Lake Correspondence Archive and will be archived with the agenda and packet tomorrow morning. And we were also intending to highlight the presentation and the video from the presentation along with some of the links that Mr. Van Gorder sent over in our Friday newsletter.
Thank you. So for public comment, we are going to start with Mr. Bob Bundy.
Yeah, Mark, that was a good presentation. I'm curious how the Mill Valley and Green Bray substations relate to these big overhead power lines that go through the Cora Madera wetlands.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to say, we're going to go through all the public comments, and then once those are finished, we'll bring it back. And then that'll be a good time, I think, for, for Mark to address any, any points that were brought up by the public that he wants to address and also for council members to, you know, advance further lines of inquiry. Thank you, Bob. We're going to go to Roy Wolford next.
Good evening. Question for Mark. Mark, about a year and a half ago, I spoke with a PG representative. It's not on the power shut off, but for the vegetation program. And I thought maybe you could give a brief summary on how the vegetation cleaning program is going in Marin County. I had been informed that it was very tough going for PG&E because awful lot of private property owners refused to allow PG on the premises to cut the vegetation. And also, a lot of people were upset that the vegetation wasn't cut really nicely. So if you could address a little bit of that, how that program's going, appreciate it.
Troy. And last hand up is Kevin Carroll.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the community resource centers. I noticed that on the map, Cora Madera in Larkspur is surrounded on three sides by the fire zones, which I understand were determined by the PGC. And then on the fourth side, we have the marsh, which has grown to brush fires. We've already had a couple this year. I'm a little concerned because the community resource centers, the nearest ones are in San Anselmo, Marin City, and San Rafael, which are all on the other sides of the wildfire areas. And so my question is, is why isn't there one in Cora Madera, Larkspur? And two, who makes that determination of where they're located? Is it PG&E and those churches that I saw listed? Is it the county office emergency services? Or is it the cities? Exactly who determines it and where would one complain to if you're unhappy there isn't one?
Thank you very much, Kevin. I do not have any other hands up right now from folks who are on the line. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this item?
We have not received any emails public comments.
And close, public comment, those were a lot of good questions and points raised by folks. So we'll close public comment and turn it back over to Mark so he can address those while they're fresh. And then we will go to the council for further questions and comments.
Sure. I, I may need some assistance with the question that I think I heard related to the transmission lines and, and the wetlands. Was that, was that the question? I wasn't, I'm not sure I understood exactly what the question was. And if this is, you know, this is generally the area that we're talking about? So I don't know. I heard a question.
Further north, Mark.
Okay. What is the, what, I didn't know what the question was exactly.
To clear myself.
There.
What the relationship of those high power lines that cut through the wetlands are in to our neighbors to the south, like what they're, you know, instead of the 101 corridor, what this role was, defining what they do and where they connect and what, what their purpose was, I think, is what he was interested in.
You know, I'm, I'd have to, I'll have to get a better answer for you than I'm going to give because I don't like speculating too much. But at times we have redundant systems. We have this with our gas transmission lines. I would not be surprised that this is part of the redundant program with the electric transmission. So if we need to work on this transmission line, we, we have another source to use if this, you know, anything happens along this here. So I will find out more about that. But at the moment, I just, I think it's part of, of just making sure that we have two lines to get into the Alto substation. I probably should mention that, you know, the Alto substation serves most all of Mill Valley. Well, it does serve most of, it serves all of Mill Valley. If in a PSPS event, it wouldn't. It also serves Strawberry to Braun and Velveteer. So, you know, and then, and then moves on down and into, and into Sausalito. So critical component, I'll double check and find that out. But as you can see, there's, there's parallel paths going all the way up. And I'm going to make an assumption at the moment, I wish I wasn't doing that. But for now, I think it's a, it's having a redundant system.
Okay, great.
So if there was a question about the community resource centers, we get back to that. So the community resource centers really are determined through our public safety specialist's relationship with the county's Office of Emergency Services. We try and identify locations that are maybe perhaps, you know, perhaps higher likelihood areas to lose power and situate them there. Sometimes it's a matter of finding a property owner or a city that's willing to allow us to establish them, to establish a community resource center. We, we have some property owners that don't want to do it. Maybe there's a school district that, you know, isn't, isn't interested or feels that they have other needs to serve. So I would say that we're probably open. This is not a firm and forever.
Looks like we've got a little. There we go.
Outdoor sites and indoor sites. In the early part of 2020, we were looking simply at indoor site pre-COVID. Once, once March rolled around, we changed our game up completely and started to find many more sites that, that are outdoors so that we can increase the distance and mask up and make sure that people who are visiting really have a lot of space that we couldn't quite achieve with the one, with the indoor sites that we located. They have to be ADA accessible. We have to make sure that they either have the, you know, the ability to receive electricity at the site or that we can connect a generator. So the lock that goes into it, and if people feel that there is a location that's better or missing someplace, if there's a gap, that's certainly something we're willing to talk with local officials about to, to try and make sure that we're not, you know, that we don't have a gap. The other question that I wrote down was related to the enhanced vegetation management program. I think I heard, and feel free to correct me, questions about our progress. I don't have a map to share exactly where we're performing the enhanced vegetation management. I can probably get one where we, where I can tell you. Where we, where I can tell you that we're trying to perform that work is going to be in areas. You know, in areas of where we have lines running up. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to turn this back on. It would just be the overhead distribution lines. So I don't know, but I mean, this would be a fair assumption that, you know, if we're trying to build with property owner approval or some of the areas are unincorporated, maybe overseen by county parks or whatnot. So whoever the property owner is, we have to get their permission and approval to go out and do the enhanced vegetation work. That's a little bit more than your, than your standard, you know, annual review of the trees and how they're growing in and towards the line. And then we try and cut the trees back far enough once so that as they continue to grow out, we, depending on the species of the tree, and this may get to the question about the ugly cutting and it doesn't look too good and whatnot, but we try and go out far enough because we really don't have the resources to come back once a month and, and it doesn't look pretty. I certainly agree. One thing that we have been doing, where it's appropriate, where the city council or community members are interested, sometimes we'll work locally to remove those trees that really aren't best situated, that just continually to grow up into the wires. We, PG&E can come in and pay to have those trees removed. City chips in a little bit. Sometimes those trees are tearing up sidewalks anyway. So we get that removed. We have, we bring in some, some replacement trees. I know nobody wants to hear this, or maybe they've heard it too often, crate myrtles. But something that just isn't going to grow up as high and into the line. So we have a pamphlet that I can share with the council and with the community called The Right Tree in the Right Place. Not suggesting people should or want to fully remove their trees. It's just an option that we've been working with in some cities and it's worked. It's been a good partnership. Those are the questions I think I wrote down. I don't know if there were others that I might have missed.
The primary points. So thank you, Mark. We're going to go to the council members now for questions and comments. So we'll start with David and then go to Charles.
Thank you, Mark. Staying on that map right there, is there a way to see on that map the product of your sectionalizers work? In other words, can we see what zones may be able to be kept in power while others are not? Is that reflected in the, in the high and moderate wildfire danger zones or what?
It's not part of this mapping system that I can turn on at the moment, but, but I will take that question back and ask if we can find a way to perhaps show the integration of the, of the distribution lines here, the sectionalizers, where they're at and where, you know, where effectively is what we call the island of safe to energize, right?
That's what, that's what. Yeah, that's what the question is.
You want to know, I mean, is it a blue cloud that goes around in this area or, you know, is it tighter?
Right.
I'll try and get that for you.
Okay. Now, what is the benefit to a town of having a facility that is a designated CRC? What do you offer?
So we offer electricity for people who need to power their, you know, we, I've been to community resource centers too often this year, sadly, with, with the fires and the winds. It's been unlike anything I've ever seen before.
Is that from having a diesel generator installed?
Um, it, it, they can have a generator on site if it's a hardened facility and we don't have to turn the power off in that particular area. It can just be a site where we're providing, you know, a place for, a safe place for people to come. Kids, bottled water, snacks, charging equipment, phones and other things. So it may be a diesel generator or it may be simply a powered facility where we've negotiated with the community that, you know, that's a designated place for people to travel. Hopefully not too far, right?
Okay.
By mile and mile.
And has anybody suggested to you these two locations as appropriate CRCs? Number one, Redwood High School in Larkspur, which is a designated Red Cross facility because it's got showers. It also happens to have a 750 KW solar facility there. So you've got a power source, whether or not there's power out there potentially, if there's a sufficient battery. And, and I'd love to see you install one. And in Correda Madera, we survived the PSPS events by having Rebecca Vaughn and Todd Cusamano set up an excellent community resource facility in both our, our community center and our town hall. And we served 1,100 people and we served food and, and power and, and all sorts of things. Partly because we have existing generators. We'd love to have those be solar.
So again, I'm happy to take this back to the public safety specialists, our community resource center team, and, and the, and the county office of emergency services. Again, if I have to go back and take a look at the map, but the objective in creating those centers was to spread them out. I can't tell you, you know, if we have a gap, then we'll have to, we'll have to work on fixing it. I wasn't part of the negotiations where, where we sat down with the office of emergency services and went through the list and chose them. We simply asked, where do you think we can best put them? Where should they be situated? Where do we think we'll have a number of outages, the number of people served? So there was a process, but if we have a gap, we can go back and talk about what locations would work. And again, it is helpful to have the city's support. If we, eventually we have to have the school district board or a property owner, libraries, city, you know, city owned facilities. Somebody has to approve that for us to use it. And certainly happy to have that discussion.
All right. Thank you, Charles.
Yeah. So Mark, I don't know if you're familiar with Correda Madera's own brush clearing program where we, and it's an ongoing program that we're planning on continually maintenanceing those high fire risk areas. But I'm wondering, you know, it sounds like you struggle with contact with local landowners and the kind of nuanced locality in executing a more successful program. So I wonder, have you ever done like a pilot program where you finance local programs that could come in and basically act on your behalf to, to, to do that? Because they have the local connections and therefore strengthen the overall program as well financially. And would you be interested in talking about that with Tom?
Typically, we've been working with the fire safe councils to do that. We'll provide funding 120,000, 100,000 and, you know, I mean, it's never enough. And I'm thankful that it's, I'll be interested to see, you know, how the impact of, am I wrong in saying it's Measure C that was passed for the, for the funds to help with some of those efforts? You can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't mind. But I, I thought it was Measure C that was, was passed. And, but, but I like what you're, if I follow what you're saying is, you know, instead of, I'm putting words in your mouth, instead of having PG&E come in and, and, you know, there's, there's maybe some not the greatest working relationships and they're not local and maybe they don't know exactly how they could do, could, could we achieve as much or more with using the same resources and funding and delivering it to folks locally and who have relationships and work with the local fire folk. So I'll, I'll raise that issue up. I mean, I think the company is deeply interested in finding ways that we partner best, work with customers best and find efficiencies. If we can achieve more at the same dollar or less, great. So let me talk with our vegetation program manager about that. We don't have any sheet. So you have to get your own sheet.
We go with goats.
Oh, goats. Well, there you go. Maybe we can find some goats.
Other questions or comments yet, Fred?
Right. Just real quick, can you flip back to your map and show that what's going on on the east side? Because I know usually the focus is on the, the west side because of Christmas Tree Hill and that area. Yeah, just wasn't sure if there's anything. It seems like there's a lot less, but again, there's Ring Mountain up there.
I will tell you, thanks for, actually, thanks for raising that question. I'll have to follow up. We, we're working with some of the folks here and I'm trying to remember the road. I'm wondering if the name of the road actually will.
Sephora Granada with Steve Stein.
Thank you. That's correct. So yes, I mean, obviously you know it. I don't know all the road names. But as you can see, we've been working with the folks in here. This is all, all underground, yet it's in the tier three area. So we are working to try and find a way to provide power to these, to these homes. I can tell you that we have successfully achieved the ability to do that in other locations. It's been a while since I've heard about this location, which sometimes I think is a good thing. If no one follows up with me, I tend to think, oh, well, maybe the problem has been resolved, but I don't know for a fact that it has been. I just know that we were talking with a number of property owners here who raised the point. It's an obvious one, right? So it's a great point. I'll make a note to follow up on that. It's usually just a switch or something that where we can, you know, make sure that the power does continue to blow up that area. So thanks for raising that.
Okay. And then just one quick comment. I think about two weeks ago, I emailed RJ because there was a dead tree off El Camino Paradise or, yeah, Paradise and El Camino that was intertwined. To me, it was intertwined with some of the power lines. And again, obviously it was a dead tree. So again, through JR, appreciate PG&E's efforts because within a couple of weeks, I think somebody came out to evaluate and shortly after, you guys didn't cut the whole thing, but you cut enough to get it out of the power line. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for saying that too. I'd love to make a quick pitch on that. Our number is 800-743-5000. People can also dial 5002. And the first question that comes up is, you know, thank you for calling PG&E. If you're reporting a hazardous emergency situation, press one. I would call that a hazardous situation and encourage people to call and press one. Getting local ground truth and intelligence about things like that is something, we patrol the lines. We look everywhere possible. Is it possible that we might have missed an area or location? It's possible. And that sounds like an area that we might have missed. So having customers and residents who, who walk streets or they're, you walk their dog or their kids or welfare bike rides and they see something like that, hugely, hugely helpful to dial that number. I'll just say it again. It's 800-743-5000. And, and again, you just, if it looks like trees are growing up into the, into the wires, just tell people to hazardous situation. They may ask the address and there may be a pole number. Very helpful. Our folks will come out as quickly, as quickly as we can get them there. Right now, everyone has been busy with the glass fire following on the, right on the heels of the Hennessy Fire. And we've had two or three public safety power shut offs. We have been working back to back to back weather events since August 14th. I've never seen anything like this. So good information if people can call us and let us know. We want to get those trees away from the wires. Thank you.
Yeah. And just as a backup, and he may not appreciate, you can always email RJ with the, I took a phone and sent it to him. So just as a backup, again, I appreciate you guys doing that. Thanks.
I also know his plate is very full too. So we love working with RJ. I was working with RJ at the county before he was happily brought over to Correda Madera and he's great. So yes, we happy to work with him. But, but you can call us directly and we'll get out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments from council members on this?
Just, just thank you. Thank you. And I, I got the links earlier today. I was looking through them. They're really helpful. And thank you for a terrific presentation. Really helpful. Thank you, Mark.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. I wish you all a good evening. And as always, you have my direct contact information. I will, you know, encourage the general public to, to use this, this link here or these, these phone numbers and emails. But council members and of course, the manager Cusamano and Rebecca have all been terrific. So anytime you need anything from me, just give me a shout.
You have something else to say?
Quick question. I'm sorry. Mark, could, is there a quick answer to why was Marin City selected as a place for installation of generators?
Yeah, I stopped sharing my screen. So maybe I'll just explain it. And I certainly, there's probably three key factors. One, that transmission line runs right up over the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, highly sensitive area. We have the lines currently under, under repair. And they're, they're functional. They're working, but we had to temporarily take down the towers. And as far as I know, I haven't updated on it. But the last I know is that they're on temporary structures, stable, working, but not the permanent fixtures. It's, it's just a very, a much more likely area that possibly could lose power to, Sausalito had lost power a few, few times. And wanted to really ensure that we could rapidly bring the city up in the event of a loss of power that like a fire or some other thing where Cal Fire may take the power down rapidly. A public safety power shut off event, we look out four or five days ahead. We have time to deploy and connect the generators. If there was a fire or some other emergency where the power just shut down rapidly, I mean, no notice. It was our attempt to try and provide Marin City, an unincorporated Marin and the, the city of Sausalito with power by having the generators staged and hooked up and ready to run.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate you coming out here to give us this presentation.
I wish you all a safe evening and pray for rain.
So one thing I'm just going to say before we move on to item four here, I meant to report out when we started this meeting that we have no, nothing to report from our closed session. We took no reportable actions. I forgot to mention that. So I'm just saying it now. And with that, we're going to move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not need to be discussed again. Any member of the council or the public can pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion or a question. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we'll move it to the public. Would any member of the public like to pull a consent calendar item or comment on the consent calendar? I am not seeing any hands up. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments on the consent calendar?
No emails, public comments, consent calendar.
Close, public comment, bring it back to the council for a potential motion on the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve consent items for A through 4E.
We vote please, Rebecca.
Councilmember Conusa?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
That brings us to item five, public hearings. Our only public hearing is 5A, which is consideration and possible adoption of ordinance number 1002, which is an urgency ordinance to extend the ability for local businesses to do, to, to bring their operations outdoors or into the public right of way. And I believe we have a staff report.
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor Beckman and council members. As you just noted, we are bringing before you this evening a urgency ordinance which would extend through November 16th, 2021, the temporary permit program established by urgency ordinance number 996. And it would also authorize town staff to extend previously issued permits pursuant to urgency ordinance 996. So do those two things. Just a reminder, because this is an urgency ordinance, it would require four affirmative votes by the town council this evening to adopt and to introduce and adopt this urgency ordinance. And if adopted, this would take effect immediately. So if you recall, urgency ordinance 996 was adopted by the town council in June, June 9th, earlier this summer and was really intended to provide some additional opportunity for local businesses to expand into outdoor areas as Marin County Health Orders at the time were just then allowing for those restaurants for outdoor dining and then later some other businesses to expand out into outdoor areas. And so this was really an attempt and sort of an effort by the town to facilitate that and to try to provide some support to local business, local businesses that may want to take advantage of those opportunities. And I would just say, I think it's fair to say that this program has been a success. And, um, I, I would just say, I think it's fair to say that, um, uh, this program has been a success. I will, um, I have a couple of slides that I'll show a little bit later. Um, actually, let me just pull it up now if I can. Sorry, I actually don't have the, not able to share my screen as I was hoping to. I apologize for that. But in any case, we have, we have, um, nine have issued, uh, nine total permits under this program. There are temporary, uh, outdoor, uh, use permits, which are use permits basically allowing, uh, outdoor operations on private property and parking lots and on private sidewalks. Those have mostly been utilized by, uh, gyms in Cora Madera. Um, and I believe there were four of those. And then there are temporary outdoor, I'm sorry, and temporary encroachment permits. Or temporary operations, encroachment permits that have, we've issued five of those. Again, there's no fees associated with those. And I think really working with RJ and, and Public Works Department, both, um, Planning Department and the Public Works Department have, have sort of, uh, worked hard to make sure that those are expedited and issued as quickly as possible. And those are, the encroachment permits have resulted in sort of the, the parklets that you've seen in, uh, near Cora Madera. Cora, old Cora Madera Square. In any case, there are some photos, um, that we included in your, um, staff report. And I was hoping to show you some of those this evening as well, but I'm unfortunately not able to, uh, get the, the, the correct, um, uh, slides up. But in any case, um, they, I think, uh, we incorporated some letters into the staff report as well from local businesses who, um, I think clearly support the program and are desire, have a desire to see this extended. We, you know, we, we've extended this, uh, proposed to extend this, or this, uh, program out through, um, a year from now. Uh, basically, or actually a year from the date it was originally, um, going to expire. So it's in November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Just because, um, you, you know, the, it, it looks like this may be a useful program, uh, well into next year. Obviously the summer months are more, uh, uh, more of an opportune time to have this program than, uh, but, um, it, it, there is still the opportunity. If, if circumstances change, everything goes back to, to sort of normal, normalcy. If the council could, uh, sort of, uh, go back to the way things were and, and, uh, end the program earlier if need be. But I think at this point, we feel like it, it will likely be needed through, um, twenty twenty-one until November sixteenth of twenty twenty-one.
Adam, you should be set up to share, um, now, but if you want me to share the pictures from the staff report, I have them open.
Well, yeah, that'd be great. I think unfortunately I, I have a screen up, but it's not letting me find that one on my, uh, when I, when I'm pressing share screen, it's not going to my PowerPoint presentation. I'm not seeing that window appear on, on one of my options. So that's what's happening on my side. I apologize for that.
Do you want to show the pictures?
Yeah, I think it would be nice to show them. So obviously, um, this, through the program, these are just some of the locations where these, uh, outdoor permits have been, um, issued. The Lark Drive-In Theater, uh, and then in, um, we have the, the cave over at four hundred Tamil Plaza. Lighthouse in old Cora Madera Square. I think you've seen a lot of outdoor activity out there over the summer months as a result of this. Uh, the Lighthouse Cafe, Burma Town and, uh, some of the salons in that area as well have taken advantage of this program. TJ's Gym, um, clearly Zin's Wine Bar, uh, and so on. So that's just some of the images. I'm not happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I think there's actually one change we wanted to note for, um, the ordinance that I think Teresa actually wanted to make note of before we, um, go to questions and public comment.
So yes, um, uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, the suggestions, it's a minor, just, uh, wording to make, um, a little bit clearer that, um, should the council, uh, want to end this sooner if the circumstances change, that you can do so by resolution. Um, so if you look at the, um, proposed ordinance on, um, the, what page is this? Page four, um, under section two, subsection A, on the second line. The second line reads two thousand and twenty-one unless, and then my proposed amendment would be, the town council, comma, by resolution, comma, determines that the conditions, and then it, it reads on. So the whole first sentence would read as amended. This ordinance and the permits authorized herein shall expire on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, unless the town council by resolution determines that the conditions that created the need for the ordinance are no longer necessary to accomplish the purposes of this ordinance.
Thank you, Teresa. We have noted that change. Uh, we'll take questions from the council now and then we'll go to public comment. Fred?
Just two questions. One is, because winter's coming up, do you envision some of those areas being, I want to say tented, you know, with, um, heaters in there? And then the other question is, is I know the town's done a really good job about putting up, I call them the traffic barriers. Um, I know there's another name for them, a technical construction name. But do you think those, it seems like they're sufficient to protect for public safety? I just wanted to get your feedback on that also.
Sure. Um, as for the tents, you know, the, I think one of the issues, and I, I'm not sure exactly where this stands. I know I did speak with Julie Kritzberger about this, um, about a week ago. But as soon as you start putting tents up and then putting actually enclosing those tents, they start to be, um, indoor spaces according to the county. And as such, they're limited to the occupancy restrictions that, that the county has for indoor uses. And so, uh, there may be an opportunity to at least have some tents that are open, uh, but not enclosed to create sort of more of a, a warm atmosphere. But there, there are opportunities, I, I still think for tents to be up with heat lamps, um, and to provide at least protection from some, uh, potentially, um, maybe light rain. So that's, that's what I say that to that. And then, and then RJ, thank you for, for getting on to answer the second question here.
Yeah, we, um, specifically chose the plastic K rails that can be filled with water and or, um, sand because they do have guidance, um, engineering guidance and safety guidance on how to use them in a safe way. And then also that with just, um, general other safety guidelines with respect to, we call it clear zone recovery. So if a car veers out of the lane, you know, how much space do they need for the given speed limit? So, um, I feel comfortable with, um, what we placed out in the town right away. And, um, I, I think it's, um, a, a good, um, method to use than just something that someone chose to install on their own.
Yeah, no, thanks. And I appreciate, um, all the work you guys have, have done on this, um, because I know supporting our businesses. We just have to do it. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Any other questions from the council? Bob?
Just a quick one. I just want to confirm, we haven't had any issues or problems at all with this, right?
No, not at all. It's been, uh, you know, it's been pretty smooth sailing. So.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Then we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. By the way, Adam, thank you. Great staff report. Uh, members of the public, if you'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. Our first comment is going to come from Pat Ravazia.
Hi, I just want to say, I think this is a great program. I think downtown Larkspur has really, um, created a whole new lively outdoor, uh, evening scene as a result of their work in this area. But I do think that once the rains come, this lifeline that our local businesses are enjoying is going to go away. So the tenting, the covering, we should be, make sure that that's allowed for them to be able to do some kind of, uh, rain protection. And we have gotten measurements taken to cover the trellis at Park Madera Center at the, um, Town Park Plaza in front of Cafe Verde to figure out what it would cost to put a rain proof, uh, cover on that, that the trumpet vines could still grow over. So, um, just want you to know, we'll be coming to you with hopes of getting some kind of financial support to put, uh, some rain protection over that area as well. So thanks for all your work on this. Keep up, keep up the great work, Cora Madera.
Thank you very much, Pat. I do not have any other hands up from the public right now. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments on this item?
We've not received any email public comments.
Uh, oh, here we go. We have another one from Allison.
We actually did send in a public comment, um, from TJ's Gym. I'm the, the wife of TJ, the owner of TJ's Gym. And we, we sent in a public comment. So I'm not sure, um, Adam, I know Martha had it, but anyway, basically, thank you for putting the program into place. I love the question, have we seen any downsides to this? Because to my mind, we certainly haven't. Um, and so it seems like a no brainer to support local businesses. You guys have been really, really great in doing that in many ways so far. So we're very appreciative. But I, you know, it doesn't matter if you read the public comment, it basically says, please, please continue the program. And I don't see any downsides. Thank you.
If I, if I can, uh, just Allison, we, we did put all the public comments into the staff report. So I think all the council members did receive that as part of their staff.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Very much, Allison. Don't have any other hands up now. So we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for any last thoughts and a motion. Bob?
Yeah, we, we need to do everything we can to protect local businesses right now. I think we move ahead with this. I like to make that motion. And also I bet we end up making some of these changes permanent because, uh, I think people like the life. So I think it's great. I'll make the motion. Let's approve this now. Thanks.
Second, the motion to approve ordinance number one thousand and two.
May I, uh, through the mayor? Yes, is that, is the motion, uh, as amended with the suggested?
As of course.
Yes, as amended. Sorry about that.
Thank you guys. Rebecca, can we have a vote when you're ready, please?
Councilmember Casusa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
That brings us to item six, our business items for this evening. The first business item six A is consideration and possible action to introduce resolution number thirty-six, twenty twenty to approve the creation of a new position titled, uh, Code Enforcement slash Communications Manager with a new salary range. And we are going to hear staff report from, is that you, Todd?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is a two meeting process per county, uh, per council, uh, policy. And so this is just for you to, uh, take in the proposal, ask any questions and provide direction, uh, to staff. And if you so wish, we will come back to you at the second meeting ultimately for a decision on this. Again, as we've discussed, um, at previous, uh, meetings, uh, the development of this position. And so again, we're asking, we've created a new position classification titled Code Enforcement Communications Manager. The salary range for this, it has been established as a recommendation. A salary survey was completed by, uh, our human resources manager. That ra- recommended range is eighty-six hundred to ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars per month. We will go over it, but there's also an amended compensation schedule C for the mid-management employees for this new, uh, position that is attached, uh, to our report. And again, as we've talked about, uh, code enforcement, you know, the town currently provides code enforcement services through our code enforcement officer, that's Michael Moriarty. This new position I've created, Michael Moriarty would be promoted into it. And then his, uh, he would then be a supervisor, um, to, um, multiple part-time or contracted code enforcement officers with a budget amendment that was approved by council at the last meeting of seventy-five thousand dollars. The intent is to provide, um, a pretty full range of code enforcement services for our residents in our community, seven days a week, and really to relieve central man police authority of this responsibility. I think it's important. I think the Marin IJ article, uh, that came out today is a perfect example, uh, of that need. The communications component of this. And so as you know, uh, at the April twenty, twenty, uh, twenty twenty strategic planning workshop for the town council, the town council actually identified, uh, the development of a communications plan as one of the top priorities for this fiscal year. On May nineteenth, the town, um, entered an agreement with Jen Reedy, uh, to evaluate the town's existing communications practices and, and provided a number of recommendations. One of those, uh, was the, uh, recommendation of a communications, um, official. And so after really evaluating, having this conversation with the council, but among staff, we really saw an opportunity with Mike Moriarty to take on a dual role, but to ensure that he has enough support underneath him, both on the code enforcement side and the communication side. And so how, um, I, I see this position is I see this communications manager as hands-on, highly strategic advisor who understands how to best craft and deliver nuances, deliver nuanced messages to support the town's goals and programs. I think one of them is a perfect example is what's going on right now with Honky, right? It's not our project, but how do we facilitate that conversation? How are we thoughtful in making sure that our residents who are impacted are part of that conversation and the process? It's a key position to really put all of our heads together and really be thoughtful in how we communicate and engage our community. As, as we've discussed at the, at prior meetings, we've, um, we put together, I'll, I'll refer you to, let's see, attachment one is the resolution, but attached to it is exhibit A. This is the current code enforcement, um, job description that we've added supervisory and manager responsibilities as well as the communications manager component, um, on page. Page one and two is the code enforcement manager duties and responsibilities. You'll see a lot of similarities to the old job description and duties. Again, supervisory responsibilities are added. But if you move down to page two and three, you'll see the communication manager duties and responsibilities. We sat down as staff and with human resources, we feel comfortable with this. Again, uh, Michael would not be, if approved, he would not be responsible for necessarily redoing our website or some of the technical work. We see that is giving him, uh, support through the budget with either, um, you know, contract employees. We have Tracy, Lorraine and Rebecca, who are very involved in our communications plan. This would be a high level, both internal and external, um, oversight and everything we do. And so with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions with the job description. I'll just lastly, because it does have to do with dollars and cents, the fiscal impact of this recommendation again, um, would be approximately, um, a hundred and three thousand dollars annually, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. Um, I am not asking for a budget amendment as we have the funds within the budget, both from a cost recovery standpoint and with some changes we've made with personnel earlier. This position within the mid man, it would be a mid-manager position under schedule C. It's also attached to your report. It would be, this position would basically be in between the town's project manager position and a senior planner position. We also, as I said, we completed a salary survey. That's also attached to your report, I believe. Let's see, our, for you first, the exhibit B, the schedule C of the compensation schedule. You can see where he slotted in red. That would be the position there. And then the salary survey, uh, is attachment two. This was a difficult one. Um, you know, full disclosure of this. And so what we try to do is we try to start with, where do we slot a code enforcement manager type of position that supervises and oversees it? And so we focused on what we're doing now, uh, the city of Mill Valley. I'm sorry, not the city of Mill Valley, uh, the city of Santa Fe. We looked at the city of Santa Rosa, the city of Nevada, uh, and we looked at what those salary ranges were. And then we took those cities, um, that have similar calls for service or, or, um, the threshold we would ask Mike to, to cover. And we looked at the assistant manager, uh, in the city of Mill Valley who handles communications. Uh, we looked again at the city of Santa Fe. Um, and we took the average salary in California for communications managers. And then with that, And then with that, that is how we came to this recommended salary range. Michael would be brought in either at step one or step two. Again, it's a five step salary range. It again, it is in the budget. I wouldn't ask for a budget amendment. And I think it's appropriate place to start and to slot him. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We'll go to David and then Fred.
Is, is it a common thing to see code enforcement and communications manager in the same position description?
No, it's, no, it's not. But I would also tell you that a lot of us amongst towns our size, we have dual role positions. As an example, you have a city, an assistant city manager. That's also the communications manager. That's a little bit more normal than what we're doing. I'll tell you, one of the things, and again, it, you have to think of the future, right? And so in the future, you would potentially probably have to have a code enforcement supervisor and a code and a communications manager, which would cost us an extra $90,000 to $100,000 a year. We're lucky in this situation where we have someone that's actually an expert in both fields that I think is seamless and it fits our, you know, it fits the role right now. But yes, it's unusual.
It's unusual. It seems to be unusual, creative and appropriate.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah. Given that we have to cycle this through two meetings, say it gets approved this meeting, gets approved next meeting. What's your timeframe for getting, I want to say the organizational changes? And then what would be the timeframe to get, I want to say, the code enforcement portion up and running?
Great question. So the, we've already started the recruitment process for part-time help on code enforcement. And so as soon as I can begin the, the, the interview and hiring process, I hope to have someone on board in the next four weeks. Actually, we're taking a really aggressive recruitment stance on that. And so that's an important one that we have to go towards, work towards. Right now, Mike is already starting to transition into the role. I'm starting to bring him in on some communications issues right now. One of them was one of the examples I just gave. And so I'm starting that expectation and training process from my level to him now. So hoping that it all goes through and gets approved.
Okay. And do you expect people in town once that gets up and running to see cars around town, town of Corder Madera code enforcement?
Yeah. So I'm looking at, we're going to purchase another electric vehicle. It's within our budget. And so I see that coming. But we also have bikes. We have electric bikes. And I'm also going to ask my code enforcement to be on foot and on the electric bikes. And we'll probably purchase another one as well.
And I like the creativity of this program you're putting together.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got a couple of quick ones before we go to public comment. One, just was going to point out that under the communications manager duties and responsibilities, at least in the version that I have, items one and item two are duplicates. And the other thing, I was just, I was curious, do we ever touch on like professional development or ongoing trainings or anything like that in our job descriptions?
No, we don't cover it in the job descriptions, but we, we cover it under a separate section under our training protocol for all positions within the town. And, and so that is one that we will have to add if this is approved.
Those are my only questions. If we don't have any other questions from the council, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. If anybody would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments about this?
No, we did not get any emailed public comments.
Not see any hands up from our residents on the line. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for any other thoughts. I don't think we're voting on anything tonight. I think we're just introducing this tonight as it's a two meeting process. So any, any closing thoughts from council members? Yeah, I don't really have any either. Oh, yeah, Bob?
Just one, which is, I think we've needed a communications person for a long time. So I'm thrilled that we're getting Mike to do this. I think this is going to be a great addition to staff. It's really going to help all of us who are in this meeting right now. It's going to make all of our jobs easier and better. And it's going to be a great benefit to the town. So great move. Thanks.
I agree with you. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, Todd, and everyone who was working on this. That brings us to six B, which is consideration and possible approval of a budget amendment requesting $200,000 in additional funds for the 2020 preventative maintenance project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So this is the 2020 preventive maintenance project. It's also our slurry project. The goal of the project is to, we're slurring about 20% of the road network here in town. And this request is kind of twofold. For one, we had very favorable pricing from our slurry bids and saw an opportunity to take advantage of that. And we're able to negotiate a tentative add-on of Redwood Highway and Madera Boulevard to take advantage of those pricings. And then separately, there was also an error in the bid in the sense that one of the streets that we always intended to include, which is Madera Boulevard, the quantity for that was, was mistakenly left off. So we're partly trying to recapture that as originally intended, but also trying to add Redwood Highway and given it's, it's a great candidate for this treatment. Early on, we also were considering it at that time. We put together a plan set, but there were some other scheduling issues with the, the Redwood Highway Path Project and some of the pavement failures you may have seen with the roots kind of bulging up the asphalt. And we just know how the timing of that was going to work. But since putting together those plans and being a project, we've been able to get the schedules to align to where we're comfortable moving this forward if the council would approve it. All in all, even with the $200,000 additional request for funds, we're still below the budget amount from last July. And then we're also below the overall estimate that went into the base bid contract, you know, a couple of months ago. And so if that, yeah, we are requesting additional $200,000 to fund Madera Boulevard and Redwood Highway.
Thank you, RJ. Any questions, David?
Is it fair to say, RJ, that the cost per yard or per, per hundred yards of paving is going down with a larger quantity?
Um, so in this particular case, we are, the quantity is less than estimated by, by a significant margin, by more than 25%. But we are getting very similar costs for these added streets. They're not apples to apples. They're, they're more major roads as you, I'm sure are aware. More traffic, more striping. So there's some intricacies there. But nonetheless, it's, it's definitely, we feel an exceptional value.
Great. Any other questions? If not, we're going to go ahead and open this up to public comment. If anybody in the public would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments about this?
We did not receive any emails public comments.
Hands up. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for comments and a motion. I just want to commend RJ and his staff. I think this is a fantastic, fantastic, you know, way to seize on an opportunity here with this thing coming in under budget and using that as, as an opportunity to strategically add new roads that are going to give us, you know, really substantially extend, extend the, you know, the life of our road network. So fantastic job to you guys. This is really exciting. And I also want to say that oftentimes when a project comes in under budget, it's a sign that the team did a really good job putting together, you know, construction drawings that were very thorough and precise. So another, I think, kind of testament to your guys' work there. David?
I think this is a really wonderful example of the public sector is kicking in some additional dollars into the economy and making investments that are, are better for our infrastructure. And this is, nobody, nobody is going to sleep on the watch. This is very affirmative and terrific way to go. So I'm very much in favor. In fact, if nobody has other comments, I would move that we approve the $200,000 addition.
So I just had one more quick comment is that outside of preserving and enhancing our infrastructure for the cars, I think an important part of this that wasn't discussed, but will be is the enhancement of the bike lanes to connect to the new complete streets project, which it will be really nice in those areas and, and an additional bonus that I think is really important for the town, given our current situation and the need to, for transport and those kind of safe means. So.
Charles, thank you. Any other comments from council members? If not, I think David has made a motion, so we can take a second.
I'll second.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
That brings us to item six C, which is consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 372020, approving a sidewalk pilot program to assist homeowners with repairs to the sidewalks out front of their houses.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm going to see if I can share my screen here for a short presentation. You're with me. Also, while I'm doing this, wanted to note that there was a change in the packet that went out. We had mistakenly had the wrong attachment. I had had the wrong resolution and we corrected it and made it available online. I am, excuse me, bear with me, it's not jumping up.
It's okay. Amy's going to read it for us.
Okay. Might have too many windows open. And so when I go to share screen, it's not generating here. Let's try again. Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. All right. Can everyone see this? Great. Okay. So thank you. I'm here to present the sidewalk pilot program. This is an item that has been in the works for, I'd say, the majority of the time that I have been here, which is, I know, about two and a half years. And it's really to aid in assisting homeowners with their responsibility to maintain sidewalk and also generate a program that just systematically helps the town improve the overall sidewalk, sidewalk network. So this is a quick review of the town municipal code here on the left. And here it talks about the responsibility of homeowners or property owners to maintain the sidewalk in front of their homes. It talks about the importance of it in that it, you know, that we keep it in safe condition and that it's negligent. Should you not do that? Obviously, if someone were to hurt themselves, that, that would not be good for the community or for public health. Here on the right side, this is, we borrowed this from Santa Felle. They, they've already implemented a sidewalk program. So thank you to them for doing this research. But this is showing many local agencies and their various codes with respect to who maintains sidewalk. And really what you're going to see, if you go down and you check, is that this is a pretty common responsibility to have the property owner maintain sidewalks. Moving on, as, as part of the analysis we've done over the last couple of years, we decided to understand, you know, how big is this problem? How many defects are there? And so public work staff initiated two sidewalk inspections. And these were very detailed. You may have seen at one point, but there were, for weeks, representatives that specialize in this going around and taking a look at the cross slopes and also measuring the vertical offset or, you know, what some people call tripping hazards between panels. And so one of the sets that we inspected was, at the time, it was the paving project that went to Chapman Park. And also it had included Council Crescent Meadow Ridge. And so that was one set that we reviewed. And just on these, this neighborhood of Chapman Hart, Chapman Park neighborhood and Council Crescent Meadow Ridge, there were 757 deficiencies due to offset sidewalk panels. And then another 59 locations that were too far severe for their method of grinding or shaving those down that required removal or replacement. And they estimated that this would be about $50,000 worth of grinding and about $250,000 to do the removal or replacement. We then did a second set, which was based on roads that were prioritized from what we called the Barrier Removal Implementation Plan that was adopted by council back in 2013. And that was related to some accessibility settlements related to, you know, just disabled access for all people of various abilities. And, and so there is, you know, over a dozen roads that were surveyed there. You can see them here in red. And actually, those are dots showing the various deficiencies on those road. And basically, you can see that it's, it's almost continuous or at least doesn't take many steps before you reach one. And it turned out in that set that there is about 10,000 areas that could require a grind and about 356 that were scheduled for removal or replacement. And they estimate about $550,000 in grinding there and about 800 for replacement. And if I had to estimate kind of what these two sets combined represent as far as town, it's slightly, slightly less than, than half the town network, I would imagine. So that just kind of gives you a sense of, of the deferred maintenance out there amongst our community. So as mentioned at the introduction, the primary goals of this pilot program are really to assist homeowners with their responsibility to maintain sidewalk in a safe condition. And secondly, establish a systematic approach to improving the townwide sidewalk network on a more regular basis. So with that, we've developed four strategies for discussion and possible adoption here. Strategy one, we're calling sidewalk grinding. And we think for about $50,000, we can make a considerable improvement in, in, in those deficiencies. And we'll talk about how that process is led, how that's funded. Separately, we, we think that $75,000 should be set aside for projects that we're already doing. You know, the, the Tamil vistas, the road rehabs were, we're, we're in a neighborhood and it makes sense to make those repairs as we're there. You know, and, and just in contrast to the municipal code and knowing that that's, you know, written into our code. Second, thirdly, is this individual sidewalk replacement. And this is really the one that, you know, town staff wouldn't see coming, but individual property owner says, you know what? I got to fix this. And I'd love some, some matching funds and I want to do the right thing. And I'm going to apply and hopefully they review my application and provide some financial assistance. And then lastly, this is kind of your sidewalk replacement project. And we've gone through, and this, this kind of mirrors a process that City of San Mateo has developed. They actually developed 15 zones within their city. And we think 10 is about right for, for Corder Madera. But essentially, you would prioritize, you know, one zone a year. Does the program does have flexibility to accelerate that or decelerate that depending on funding limitations? But basically, no zone would get multiple years of projects before someone else gets one. So there would be a sequencing effort there. But the idea is at the end of that, that 10-year or 10-zone cycle, you've given everyone and in town an opportunity to some improvement to their sidewalk network and some matching funds. So a little more in detail on each strategy. Here we have this sidewalk grinding. People in the industry call it shaving. Here it's where you have these vertical offsets up to generally an inch and a half. And that's because concrete is about four inches thick. So you go too much more than that and there's not enough concrete left behind. This would be a, a town, we're proposing it as a town-funded effort, a town-led process, but allow property owners the, the chance to opt out. And in general, these are because if we can bulk these together and, and do a high quantity, these are often less than $100 each. And so if we try to do this as a property owner-led process through permits, through lots of paperwork, it's, it's not effective or efficient for them, nor is it for town staff. And so. nor is it for town staff. And so, given those dollars, it makes sense for us to take a lead and, and implement some of those and just be very efficient and just kind of make it happen. Another side note of the shaving, it's also considered a very green method when compared to conventional replacements where you have to demo the concrete, which involves heavier equipment and then haul it to the landfill and then you have to pour it again. And so, you're saving not just costs, but reductions in concrete waste, saving water, all the machinery and, you know, CO2 gas emissions that go into that process. And they're, they're pretty significant. So, this is, yeah, strategy two, this is our sidewalk, CIP sidewalk replacement and repairs. As mentioned, a lot of this stuff, you know, has, has been done in the past. You know, I think just by the, the virtue of council approving projects, but just kind of tying it to the program and, and showing that, you know, it's, it's part of the investment. And then also just cleaning up that consistency with the municipal code and having it understood that we're purposely doing something and in acknowledgement of, of the code that we have. So, this would be on those projects, we would, we would implement what we think is appropriate for sidewalk and for grindouts. And town staff would lead the effort and offer, you know, property owners to opt out should they need to. On the right, that's a photo of Tamil Vista. So, you can see where some new sidewalk was recently installed. So, this is your individual sidewalk replacement. And we'll talk about funding contributions on the next slide. Right now, we have twenty five thousand annually set aside. This would be a homeowner application that they would submit. It would include some contractor quotes. And part of this program would allow us to waive encroachment permit fees or tree permit fees when it's not tied to a building permit and, and our building permit process. And the, and the purpose there is, you know, there's kind of this similar to how we talked about the Santeri District private street laterals. It's, it's when you're doing the large remodel, when you're doing the large scale development. I think you're, you're kind of aware of bringing things up to a certain standard. And so, we think those fees should stay in place, but we're trying to help the people who weren't expecting some of these, you know, expenses and then trying to cut them some slack to, to comply with the, the maintenance responsibilities. And then I'll go into the contributions here. So, yes.
I know you said that there was an, I think, an outdated version of the resolution. So, that may be what I have. But I'm just looking in the, in the packet, strategy three, item D says permit required. And, and on that slide, it showed it looked like there's no permit required.
Correct. So, yeah, that's, that's one of the areas that was, it must have been the prior draft. So, yeah, we're, we're discussing waiving encroachment permit fees and tree permits for this process for strategy three.
Wow, impressive catch there, Eli.
So, here, we, you know, we, we're lucky. We didn't have to completely reinvent the wheel. It doesn't mean that we didn't give it a lot of thought, but we did start with the Sanderfell contribution limits. And so, they pay half or fifty fifty of the cost of sidewalk up to a thousand dollars. They will also take on the cost of the curb and gutter a hundred percent. And now, that's only when it's required. It's, it's not if there's a hairline crack. It's really if it's absolutely needed because functionally it's important because of roots lifting, lifting that up as well. And, and I'll say generally curb and gutter, for the most part, it's pretty consistent. That is a town responsibility. So, it does make sense to fund that outright. Secondly, or sorry, third, tree removal, they do have actually, they fund the full amount of the tree removal and replacement. And, and I didn't get a chance to look at their municipal code on, on what it speaks to about trees. But I do feel like we have a fairly robust ordinance with respect to trees. And I think it clearly puts that onus on the property owner. And so, I thought fifty fifty was more appropriate for, for our town. So, that was one of the, the deviations from Sanderfell. And then also, I, I didn't see in their program, they had a cap on the trees of the maximum amount. And so, I had put in twenty five hundred dollars as a maximum amount, although they did have this overarching cap down here in bold of five thousand max per residential property and two thousand per commercial property. So, at some point, if they didn't have an individual cap for the tree item, it would be captured for the overarching maximum. So, getting to the last strategy, strategy four. So, we would essentially use those same matching contributions for both strategy three and strategy four. The difference here is this would be a town-led process or project. You know, here's a, here's a draft of what the zone map could look like where we've split up the town into ten groups. We still need a little bit of fine tuning. We're, you know, the idea is just to balance the amount of sidewalk in each of the zones as best we can, but at the same time, considering the various neighborhoods. So, we're not doing a third of one neighborhood while we're doing, you know, one year and then coming back and another year to do the other two thirds. We're trying to group those, but also balance them. And really, the benefit here is town-led process, a more competitive bid process. So, as we come in and, you know, perhaps it's a two hundred thousand dollar project. And then we get a lot more attention from contractors. They see more efficiencies. The unit prices come down. So, that's definitely one of the, the benefits for someone in those zones and wanting to participate. And secondly, we would facilitate the process. So, so less effort on their part to see it through. However, we are, there is a clause in this strategy to prioritize zones that are essentially shovel-ready. So, if there's a neighborhood, one of these zones, once we finalize the map that, you know, there's some neighborhood champions and they've already coordinated with, you know, their neighbors and they have a long list of people ready to go and interested and motivated. We, we do want to give that priority because that overall does improve efficiency for everyone. And so, that, that is one that causes to be proposed. And with that, that's the, the summary of the program and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you RJ. We'll start with David.
Big kind of question. These strategies are not mutually exclusive, or are they? If, if you start, if you start with a generous strategy, won't that negate any possibility of having a fifty fifty sharing? So, you understand my, my question? I haven't stated it very well.
I, I, yeah, I can answer it in a way that I think gets to the response you're looking for. Um, so there, there are some moving pieces. You know, this is, we're, if, if we move this forward, we're just getting off the ground. There's some logic to one day having all of the strategies fall in a zone and kind of march through town individually, but that's not the way it's set up now. We're gonna look at, you know, perhaps there's an area that is higher need because there's more hazards out there. And so, the only one that is gonna be specific to zone is going to be strategy four. The rest, you know, we, we could cover multiple zones as part of our grinding work each year. The, the individual sidewalk replacements, there, there's no boundary limits other than being within the town jurisdiction. Anyone can apply each year. Obviously, there is a, there is a provision. You can't, you know, dip into the funds multiple times. And then the last one, the CIP, it's really gonna be driven by our, our projects, not by requests from the public.
Great, Charles.
Okay, you, you hit my sweet spot. I love sidewalks. I think it's one of the best assets of a neighborhood. And I think Cora Madera is blessed with a lot of them. But I think Cora Madera is also an older town and like just thinking comprehensively about this isn't part of our infrastructure. Not leaving it on the individual is the smarter way to go. I think that there's a lot of synergies and I'm gonna talk about some of them to see if you've thought about it, if we should think about it. So, one is, you know, outside of this, is there a standard spec and quality of the pore and the, the, that you look for in this? And ultimately, do we have that? And is that available to the residents or to the contractors? Do we have a negotiated or expedited slash vetted contractor list of people that have basically could apply to this pilot so that if a resident is identified or wants to, they can just come in and use people? Because part of it is I've seen a hodgepodge of different levels of contractor ability and, and understanding about what the performative aspects of the sidewalk. And ultimately, if we're standardizing it, bringing it under the town purview, I would like to see some kind of standards, like, you know, same color or same function and durability and, and an understanding of how long it'll last and that kind of thing. So, you know, I think that that's why it's so great that it would start falling back under the town. I don't actually agree with it being part of the owner responsibility. If you really want to see it well-maintained for the entire infrastructure of the town. So, I'm really excited about that. And maybe, you know, once again, just because everybody else is doing it as a tradition, I think this is where the town can be progressive and basically redefine the twenty first century of taking it back for the benefit of the community so that they stop being neglected. Because everybody has a different opinion about what level of upkeep should be, right? So, some of the other ones were outside of the grinding, you know, in a lot of the areas, because we're built, built on wetlands and stuff, there's also a lot of cracking and patching needs. And I've seen a lot of residents not know how to do that. And even contractors, right? They come in with a lot of different systems and sealers and, and so, if that could be looked at and understood as a way, because I think that's once again, a way where you could save the panel without having to fully replace it. But I think that there should be a standardized method that should be discussed with residents. My other one is, is, you know, the, the traditional break it up and repour it method. Have you ever seen like more like panel, like actual panels, let's say it's bluestone or concrete that are already pre-poured in a factory, right? That you could come out and just drop these things in. And then ultimately, if they resettle instead of grinding them or breaking them out, you could just basically redo the substrate, right? The sand or whatever and reset these like giant pavers. But as the town, like, you know, we could start taking some kind of leadership in that, just as a way to basically, you know, that way, even if it starts breaking apart, you don't have to destroy it. You can just reset it. And I don't know if you've ever seen a system like that or if that exists, or if it's just in my crazy mind. But I think that that would be an exciting part of that to at least explore. So, because they have such big CO2 impacts with poor wet concrete, etc. So, that's enough for now, but I'm very excited to see how this progresses. Oh, one more is, you know, ultimately, I think, you know, as being the representative on TAM, I think they have innovation funding, but also, you know, they fund overall, they're there to reduce traffic trips and increase walking. And I think that this would be an interesting discussion to have with the TAM leadership to see if there's ways to, i- i- if the pilot proves to be effective and, and really has overall benefits to their goals, if, if we can find ways to find support for, from that. So, there you go. Answer what you can now.
Yeah.
Think about what I, others, so.
Um, yeah, so there, there's definitely a standard method. It's twenty five hundred psi concrete, four inches thick, two pounds of lap lac, medium brush on the finish. That's a Marin County standard that goes to all cities and towns. As far as the negotiated contractor list, that's absolutely something we would intend to put out, similar to what we've done on the, the district side. We, you know, as we come through and ask homeowners to upgrade their private street lateral, we, we have a pre-qualified list. And if we can also have that list include predetermined costs, we will. It's harder on the individual side because so much of the cost is how much you're pouring on that day. But at a minimum, there would be a short list of interested and qualified contractors available to homeowners. And we put that on our webpage. Yeah. And then some of the other ones, standard maintenance. Yeah, it's just, when you have cracks and those type of defects, it's just, it's a little bit more judgment if it's safe or not. And then, yeah, and then depending on the severity, do you replace it all or just seal it? But, you know, we could obviously assist in that decision-making process with some of the property owners. And then lastly, just on sidewalk in general and whether that should be a town thing, I, I don't want to get into that too much, but it's, I think it comes down to a cost and liability thing. And I think what I've seen in other places, when you run the numbers, it is a huge expense. So, it would definitely require a lot more analysis if that's something council wants to consider. And I'll have to get back to you on the, the report slabs.
Great, thank you, Charles. Any other questions for RJ? Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, under strategy three, the five thousand dollars that you mentioned is the cap, that's for the city of Sanderfell?
That's the one they use. And I think it's an appropriate level. Okay, certainly up for discussion.
Okay, because if I do the math, if I have this correct, based upon what you have in the strategy, the max for us would be, I think, seventy five hundred. If I do the math, again, that's worst case going for the four thousand, the thousand, and I think there's twenty five hundred in there. But given that we're only giving twenty five thousand to that strategy, you're looking at maybe three homes a year. Again, I'm looking at worst case. Do you see a lot of people engaging in that strategy?
So, a couple of things. So, yeah, at first glance, you can see there's a discrepancy. If you add up all the subcategories, it exceeds five thousand, but that, that is by design. So, you, you max out, you would have to max out multiple strategies to get to five thousand. And if you max out all three, you would still only get five thousand. And then, sorry, the second part of your question was, sorry.
Yeah, I guess the thing is, again, if I just do the math, worst case, you're looking at seventy five hundred that
Oh, right.
Max out on, given the twenty five thousand, that means basically three homeowners.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, we'll, we'll see how it goes. There's two things that are there for us to, to use. And that's, there is a intended a clause that we can flex funds within each strategy, especially if something is, there's leftover. So, one of the strategies isn't, isn't using the full amount of money. We can then repurpose that to, say, the one you're referring to that has individual sidewalk replacements. And then the second part is, I, I don't expect, I expect most of people applying. It, it's gonna more than likely be sidewalk or sidewalk and tree and, and less likely curb and gutter in most of the cases. And so, you know, in our discussions with Sanderfell, they said most of the time, they're contributing one to two thousand dollars per applicant. And so, then we get a little more bang for a buck. But again, you know, looking at the zones, there, there's gonna be years where we're, we're under on, on some of those larger projects. And then we can shift some of that money to assess or, you know, assist the individual sidewalk property owners.
Okay. And the answer to one of my question was, it's just to clarify, it sounds like you can reallocate money within those strategies depending on if one is not being used, you can reallocate that money to others that are being used. Okay. And then one last question, I think in three of the slides on the strategies, there was a statement, I think it said something about property owner can opt out. Can you just describe what that process is? And how that would, I don't see property owners opting out because it's improving their sidewalk. But
Yeah, I, I would say it's, it's gonna be very similar to what we do on the district side. You know, we, we say, hey, you've been triggered by our capital improvement project. The town is willing to perform the lower lateral at its expense unless you want to do it on your own with your own funds. unless you want to do it on your own with your own funds. And I, I, we, we, we started this opt-out last year and I haven't gotten a letter, so.
Okay, so it sounds all good. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Questions? Bob, any questions from you? Okay, awesome. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, RJ, if you could just, because I think there's a little bit of unclarity out there, just like there is with the sewer laterals. If you could just like overview real fast when it comes to like sidewalks and the little planting strip outside of our houses, who owns those things and who's responsible for maintaining them? Because it's not the same, right?
So the planter strips, any trees in there are, are the responsibility of the front team property owner, along with the sidewalk adjacent to their properties.
But they're not on private property, right?
Correct, they're actually within town right away. And the other thing that is a little surprising, but it's actually more common than not, is most people associate town right away with usually the back of sidewalk. And often it's, it's several feet in, it's, and, and it can be also. So unless you have an official survey, you don't know for sure. Marin map is, is a nice guide, but so if sometimes we might be installing some feature, clean out or something just behind the sidewalk. And, and we're doing that because we know it's town right away.
And one other quick question, with these, with these sidewalk panels, how much offset is too much?
So technically speaking, in accordance with the ADA Act of 1990, a tripping hazard is a quarter inch or more, which is not much, you know, the width of a pencil.
Awesome, thank you, RJ. If there are no other questions for RJ, we're going to turn this over to the public for comments. We're going to start with Roy Wolford. Anybody else would like to comment, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. So get Roy on here and then Bob.
Hey, good evening again. Thank you for putting together this program 50/50. I was just looking at my notes, 1994, had 52 square feet replaced for $168. That was a 50/50 program with the, the, the town sidewalk hazard elimination program. So I think we should probably be able to get that work done for about the same price, right? Okay, anyway, so thank you for the, the presentation and documentation, RJ. On the maps that you showed and the roadways that were, and I wasn't clear whether you thought that or the committee thought that there was bad sidewalks there. I drove around yesterday, my wife and I, and Meadowwood Ridge Drive has almost pristine sidewalks. I mean, they're are beautiful. It's only on one side of the street, so I'm not sure why that was designated. I think George Topor and myself have submitted quite a bit of evidence of disrupted sidewalks in Mariner Cove area, and it seems like that was completely disregarded. Other than the fact that I try to interpret what you wrote on projects like on Flying Cloud Pat, Passage and Pacific Queen. I mean, they look like a war zones on the streets. Sidewalks are just as bad, Mount Everest, I sent in a lot of pictures. And it seems like those were disregarded by BPAC and the staff. So I, I hope you can clarify that. And then over in Charles area, looked over in that area, Mohawk and all those areas. Some of those sidewalks look a lot worse than Council Crest. The one area that doesn't have any sidewalks was Sausalito. But a couple of things, one, really roots need to be removed. It's, they have to be because within a short period of time, they will disrupt the sidewalk. And unfortunately, it'll probably nail the slotted drains that we've had done because there were no root barriers. So those roots, those streets have very, very strong roots. In addition, when I walked around, we, wife and I drove around, a lot of the sidewalks are blocked by vegetation. So there's vegetation overgrowth. So there needs to be something that addresses that vegetation overgrowth. And then for the life of me, I don't understand the insistency of the town saying that when you remove a tree, you have to replace a tree. There's lots of other options and vegetation and wonderful flowering and that sort of thing. They can go in curb strips and that sort of thing. So I think those areas need to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. We're going to go to Bob next here. And Bob, if you go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, yeah, I would agree with Roy. The Mariner Cove Neighborhood Association would be very anxious to work with Public Works to identify or help in any way with the project. I'm also particularly appreciative, and I know Roy is also, that you've made it much easier to remove liquid amber. And I would only amplify what Roy said in that if you do a shaving project, but the need for the shaving is because a root has disrupted the sidewalk. The tree has, needs to be addressed. Otherwise, within a few years, that offset is going to be back again. So I just want to also emphasize with Roy that the trees need to be looked at very carefully or they just create more problems a few years later. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We do not have any other hands up from the public right now. Rebecca, did we get any email public comments?
No. Any emails public comments?
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, we've got one more hand that just went up. It is Bill Kimball. We're going to bring him on here.
Yes, hi, another Mariner Cove question. But can you give us any sense of when, you know, when a neighborhood like Mariner Cove would, would, in the process would come to you and, and let you know that we're shovel ready and ready to go? And I guess, you know, I guess give you a list of names or addresses or what, you know, what is it that you're going to want, you know, for us to, you know, as you prioritize your zones? And when do you think you'll do it?
Okay, RJ, can I start off?
Absolutely.
When you're ready, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready.
Your hands up right now, so we'll close public comment and we will turn it over to staff before we go to council comments.
So, so a couple of things, from a staff perspective, my perspective, being part of the Bay Cities Risk Pool, this is a big risk management conversation in a lot of cities and towns. And RJ and his team really did an outstanding job. And it's one of the leaders in the Bay Area, from what I've seen, San Mateo is another one. Recommendation for is, is, is really important to identify, you know, because a lot of work still to be done, right? We need to break it into 10 sectors, we need to identify the 10 sectors, you prioritize them and then you go and you do it over a period of time. And for us, if we're ever, heaven forbid, someone is hurt or, you know, wherever looked at or sued or in litigation, having this program and process, knowing now that there are issues and having a process to correct them is really important. As it relates to Mariner Cove, as we have three members that live as part of that association and, and staff is me. I brought RJ into this conversation and really the sidewalk program started with Mariner Cove, some discussions with, with me and RJ. And, you know, I met with Bill and George Topor specifically to say, hey, go ahead and identify those squares and portions of the sidewalks that need to be repaired. Have sign off from those neighbors that they're willing to, you know, contribute, you know, 50% and they want the work done. And RJ and his team will take something to council and we'll replace those squares. That's still on the table, nothing's changed. As I've shared with Bill and George, as I think three months ago. Go ahead and provide the information, Bill, and to me and RJ, and we'll take something to the council. Because that, this conversation's really started with you and I'm committed to at least asking council for that to happen. So that's still on the table, so nothing's changed. And related to the other questions, I'll, I'll defer to RJ on that.
Great. Yeah, so when we talk about sidewalk networks and kind of known conditions, it's a little different than, or it's a lot different than our roads and our pavement networks, which we look at annually or we have reports done by consultants every two or three years. So we know, we have a full plan of what should go first and in what order. We're kind of starting fresh, so, you know, we develop, we want to develop these 10 zones and then come up with a system. And so we focus right now on just creating a fair process. And I'm, I'm not disagreeing with, with Roy that some zones are worse than others. And I bet you I can guess a handful of them. But we just want to start with a fair process and then kind of work out from there. On the comment about tree replacement, you know, it, it, the program doesn't demand that a tree be replaced. You know, I, I think it's, it's on the table and, and if a tree is to be replaced, it would be on the recommended list. I believe our beautification committee, committee has a list of trees that are less likely to impact sidewalks and other infrastructure. So we would, you know, I, I think it actually, our policy requires they use one off that list. Something else I want to reference, the strategy number four, which is the larger project, won't kick into gear until next fiscal year, just because of the amount of planning effort that's going to go into it. But that does mean that we think there will be one next summer. But that gives us, you know, the next, you know, six to eight months to, to really plan that out and, and get bids and then move that forward. And yeah, to Todd's point, you know, we, we've heard loud and clear that there's, you know, desire in Mariner Cove. And then we want to give them absolute opportunity to move that forward. And we also want to hear what the other committee members in zones have to say. And we just want to move forward with as many improvements with the funds and resources that we have. That's, that's really the bottom line.
Great, thank you, RJ. We'll turn it back over to the council now for any other comments that council members have or further questions for staff. Fred?
Yeah, overall, I think it's a great program. I think it's a step in the right direction. One thing for consideration, again, I'll leave it up to staff about the potential, about maybe setting up a separate email address. So if somebody does see a sidewalk issue, it can go in a separate email box, whether that's under you, RJ, or not. This way it's not getting buried in a town email address somewhere. And the other thing, again, just to get this out there and just not promoting it just for consideration. I know it's hard for you guys to inspect all the streets. And you may want to consider potentially, again, there's some issues using drones. I think PG&E uses them to inspect their power lines. It just seems like it'd be a fast and efficient way. Again, I know there's some issues regarding privacy. If there's vegetation overhanging, wouldn't be able to see sidewalks and then power lines. But I just wanted to get those out there. Overall, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Charles? And then Bob?
Because, because I'm interested in drones, I just wanted to follow up on Fred's. Instead of a flying one, you know, they have these little, basically, if you think the 10-year program and this ongoing maintenance, ultimately like long-term strategy is to look at this little robot that basically could drive around. And then it can actually tell the difference between the, the height differences and really do an analysis as it moves along all these designated paths in GIS, right? So just thinking holistically about how we advance as a, as a town and a smart city. I'd really like to see those programs and I think we're enabled and capable of delivering on that. So that would be my hope.
Thanks, Charles, Bob.
Just wanted to mention, we discussed this in detail at the BPAC meeting last week and there was enthusiastic support for it there. And I feel the same way tonight. I'd love to see us get rolling on this and get RJ going on this. He's got lots of ideas and lots of direction. And the sooner we get rolling on this, the better off we'll all be. Thanks.
I, I think you said my name, but it didn't quite come through. Anyway, I think there will ultimately be an equity question across all zones in town. Some of us don't have sidewalks to be upgraded or maintained. We do have some hillside pathways. So if the math or the fairness and spread of these resources across town can be done in such a way as perhaps because, let's say that the majority of streets in one zone don't have any sidewalks, that you save some of that money up for slightly bigger improvements in pathways that can be used in emergency escapes. Maybe improving, putting some additional reinforced concrete steps on public rights of way that, that look as though they're, it looks as though that they're pathways on maps, but in fact are just steep hills right now. Does that sound like a fair, fair balanced way to proceed in the long run?
I would just say, if you have to balance it out, you can't come walk on other zone sidewalks.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good point. I'll just tell you that you're staff and I think it's an interesting apples to apples, dollars and cents. It's something that I'll, I'll share with the council at an upcoming meeting of how we look at our capital improvement monies and projects over a five-year plan span of showing some being equity, as you just said. How much do we put into vegetation management to flood control? How much do we put to the streets and the sidewalks to the pathways? And so we do do that analysis and I'm happy to kind of share that and make sure you agree with our, our decision-making on equity. So it's a good point.
So what, what is, what is wanted? This is, you're asking for a vote in favor of proceeding with all of the strategies?
Right.
Or having, having a tool, a toolbox with these different tools available for you to proceed with as, as best works with the budget and future CIP budgeting?
Yeah, I would approve the resolution, which includes all four strategies. Only strategy four would be deferred one fiscal year, just because it requires more planning, but that's built into the resolution.
And I, I would just, before we ask for a motion here, I would just jump in and say, I, I, I agree with Bob. I think this is a fantastic program. I, I'm just so impressed with the work that RJ and his team have done, not only on this project, but also on the parallel private sewer lateral project, right? I think these are great things. They're, they're fixes that need to happen that are really important to, to public, you know, well-being. And that the town frankly, doesn't have the resources to do these all ourselves as much as we would like to. So I think it's fantastic that we're putting together these programs to help residents, you know, to kind of get this collective action going. I feel like that, you know, if you want to get philosophical, this is like the point of government, right? Is to collect a little bit of taxes from people and then use it to help folks take on these projects that they otherwise couldn't do by themselves. So I think that's great. You know, it's, it's fantastic. I almost wish there was like a page on our website or something where residents could go and just be like, ways that I can get, you know, help from the town, because I, this is just awesome. I, I was frankly, I was slightly puzzled by the, the way the public comment went this evening. Because I thought that this was a, a program that really provided a robust framework for a lot of the problems that we've been talking about with regards to fixing sidewalks. I live in Mariner Cove, so I know how bad they are in Mariner Cove. But I've also seen the problem in virtually every other neighborhood in town. So I think this is a, a great framework to start attacking that. Not only the neighborhoods where it's worse, but you know, just townwide. And I also was so thrilled to see that you included that little provision about the liquid amber trees. Because as residents, especially Roy, has noted repeatedly, these trees are a real problem, especially in Mariner Cove where they're planted, you know, like nobody's business, tearing up the sidewalk. So I think this is, I'm so glad to see that you added a provision there where we can get rid of those trees without, you know, without that permit. Did you want to jump in, RJ?
Well, so that was, that was part of the error. So there, there was an attempt in a, in a proposed, the first proposed resolution to include some language. And then we were working with our legal staff and that has to happen on a separate action. But we, we see a way to create efficiencies either way. And/or we may come forward in a future agenda and, and bring a revision to the ordinance on that subject.
Yeah, yeah.
We're aiming to come back to a, a way to, to make it easier to get rid of these, these problematic trees?
Yeah, it's correct, yeah.
But keep replacements, keep replacement, tree for tree. Carbon sink.
Second, but the, the very last thing I want to say is I, I did just want to thank a number of residents that I'm aware of. You know, Roy, Bill and George, who've been working with Todd. He's, you know, Todd's been keeping me apprised for years now that, you know, they've been really, I think, instrumental in, in moving this program forward. So I want to thank them for their efforts. I'm sure there are a lot of other residents in town who have been working on this too that I'm not aware of. So thanks to all of them, I, you know, like I said, I think this is a great program and it, you know, it takes community to make it happen. Takes community and it takes great staff. And with that, go to Charles.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Eli. So in your talking, it just came to mind that I'm also on the safe routes to school. And we were talking about prioritizations outside of zones. Also, I think the safe routes to schools of sidewalks are part of that, that, that be considered and prioritized just because the children on bikes, scooters, walking ultimately, you know, get more adversely affected from those kind of divots and that kind of thing. And so that could be one of the methodologies in which you, you analyze and think about that infrastructure, so.
Great point, thank you, Charles. Any other comments? And if not, we can take a motion on this resolution. Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second.
Great, thanks, Bob. Rebecca, when you're ready?
Councilmember Cisa?
Yes.
Oh, do we need to make the motion?
Oh, do we need to make the motion reflect that the resolution as as presented?
Today.
Good morning. Councilmember Cisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
That wraps up our business items and brings us to item seven, which is council and manager reports. Todd, to you, good sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, just a quick reminder, we have our community chat next Tuesday at four o'clock. And then at five o'clock, we have our council workshop to talk about some potential strategies of how to handle unfunded CalPERS liabilities. And tonight is Teresa Strickers' last meeting with us as our town attorney. And tomorrow, effective, effective tomorrow, Amy Ackerman will be our interim town attorney, and she is also on this call as well. And so I'm going to turn my time over to Teresa as I know she wants to say something to the council. Teresa?
Thank you, Todd. Yes, I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to thank the town council and town staff for the opportunity to serve the community of Cora Madera. It has been a professionally and personally rewarding experience to have the this opportunity to work with such dedicated and top notch staff and policymakers and such an engaged and caring community. It has really been a terrific experience for the last three and a half years, and I just wanted to thank all of you. And I wanted to say that I am leaving you in phenomenal hands. Amy Ackerman is a seasoned and experienced government lawyer who I think is a perfect match for the town. So with that, I'm going to hand the baton virtually to Amy and say thank you again and best of luck. And you all know where to find me. I'll be just across the bridge in Richmond.
Thank you for your service, Teresa.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Teresa. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of attorneys and you're one of the best. So thank you.
Thank you.
Even when I have disagreed with you, you have taught me a great deal and you are an extremely ethical and professional individual. And I I celebrate that you've chosen to go to a bigger and much more complicated city than ours.
Thank you.
You're always welcome back.
Thanks, Teresa.
Point us.
Thanks. So with that, Amy, do you want to just say hello real quickly?
Yes, hi, I'm Amy Ackerman. I'm very excited. A little bit scared to take over from Teresa because I know what a fabulous lawyer she is. But we were colleagues before the San Francisco City Attorney's Office, and it's been a delight to reunite with her. And I'm a big fan of Cora Madera. I have spent many of, let's just say I've contributed to the sales taxes pretty well at your various loving lovely shopping venues. So I look forward to getting to know the town better. And I've already started working with staff who I think are fabulous and I'm just really excited about this.
To have you, Amy. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome.
All right, Todd, did you have anything else that you wanted to report?
That's it, boss.
Awesome. Okay, we will go to council member reports. We'll start off with Fred.
Yeah, I attended the MC MMC Economic Recovery Meeting, which was last Friday. Just one thing that came up, which I think RJ kind of alluded to before. There's could be some issues with what if even though you're outdoors, what's considered indoor dining versus outdoors? And even though it could be outdoors, it could be considered indoors. Some of these items, I think they're being worked through the Marin County Managers Association. This way the towns and the cities are on the same page and it's not like we're looking at it one way. Mill Valley is doing something else and Larchburg is doing something. So they're trying to get some consistency there, which is a good thing countywide. And the other thing is last, I think about a week or so ago, I attended a meeting. It included residents on El Camino, Lower El Camino, Central Marine Police Authority and also RJ. And the issue was speeding on Lower El Camino. And just for background real quick, a couple of months ago, a couple of residents approached me regarding people speeding on El Camino. I tied them in with staff, Todd and RJ. CMPA was really responsive. They put out one of their data monitors on that street to collect data as far as people speeding. Between that, RJ collecting past data, going back, I think, 10 years complaints and stuff like that. So that was a springboard to set up a meeting with, I think, about seven or eight residents on that street. Again, CMPA sent two of their officers out, including one of their traffic enforcement officers. And RJ was there. That street is, I think, targeted for complete streets in 2022 sometime. So RJ is going to do a traffic study the next three to four months, plus or minus. And he's going to try to come back with some interim measures to try to reduce speed on that street without spending a lot of money, knowing that we're going to be doing a complete streets in 2022. I mean, just one thing, last thing to add to that, I think that is another similar to the sidewalk pilot program that Eli, like you mentioned, there's a number of residents mentioned, you know, that have been involved with this. This, I think, is the same type thing where it shows true cooperation, where it's residents getting together. I think there's like 10 or 12 that said there's an issue going to town staff, town staff taking the time to collect data, meet with those neighbors and also getting CMPA involved. So again, I just think it's a true testament to Cora Madera residents, the staff and just collaboration with everybody involved. Thanks.
Charles?
So nothing to report of latest attendance, but there is a Transportation Authority of Marin meeting coming up this Thursday and I had advanced the agenda. And I think that there's some really good programs they're going to present about funding mechanisms for government institutions to electrify their fleets and their facilities. And if you have a chance to attend and think about how it could affect our community, I think that that would be a really good thing to spend a Thursday afternoon to do. I look forward to it and I'm definitely going to share it with staff and see how we can improve our own infrastructure based on that. So.
Thank you, Charles. Bob?
Yeah, we had a BPAC meeting last week. The big item was the sidewalk improvement program, but there were also a number of other projects. And RJ and Jared are doing a fantastic job. There's lots of great bicycle and pedestrian improvement projects going on in town. We had a wildfire JPA meeting with our new executive director, Mark Brown. The big thing was we approved the work plan for the year, which is huge and extensive. And then finally, I just wanted to recognize Central Marin Fire. I walk regularly on Lower Summit Fire Road off Christmas Tree Hill. And over the last two months, they have done an incredible job clearing vegetation and opening the canopy on that road. If you haven't seen it, you should go take a look. It's incredible what they've been able to accomplish. And that is a key escape route for Christmas Tree Hill. So I just wanted to thank them. They're doing a terrific job because that is a huge public safety improvement for the town. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. David?
Agree with that. I just wanted to keep folks up on a couple of different things that are related to Marin Clean Energy or now MCE Clean Energy. Proceeding with funding individuals and and community facilities with clean backup power. And about over 100 different households with who are who are, I would say medically challenged with battery backup and advancing with over $6 million of resilient program, resiliency programs. And just recently put out a request for offers for long term battery backup, that is long duration storage, so called, that would be sufficient technical solutions for batteries that would last through a potential two or three day PSPS event, especially if combined with with solar to restock the energy in those batteries. There is, this is not an official assignment by y'all, but MCCMC in February had a meeting and a woman named Guada Mizetti spoke about micro grids. And immediately after that, several different electeds from the county and other cities came to those of us who are on the Climate Action Committee of MCCMC and said, we should take more action with clean micro grids. And that group is advancing with gaining more information and plans and ideas about powering beyond individual facilities for community use when the power goes out or when there is a diminution of power in these super hot days. So there the effort is clean resilience, not just pulling in dirty diesel engines to put into the frontline communities in Marin.
Great. Thank you, David. I don't have too much to report. Just real quick. One exciting development, I was elected president of the League of California Cities North Bay Division. So that's, I think, some really good representation for Cora Madera there. So that's nice. I also attended the league's annual conference last week. It was a little lower key than usual. Usually we get to fly to Long Beach for that and it's a little more fun. This was all over Zoom for three days, but there wasn't too much to report from there. There was a non binding, but like the big culmination of it was a non binding vote to recommend that the like the full league support a policy urging urging a change to federal law that would make social media companies legally liable if their services are used to solicit criminal activity. So that was, that was the big show there. Attended a CMSA meeting last week. Nothing much to report there. Everything's all good. That place is running extremely well. So I'd say Cora Madera SD2 are well served by CMSA and that's all I've got to report. And with that, we can go ahead and take any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting. Todd?
Mr. Mayor, congratulations to Cora Madera is dominating. So good job on that. I just wanted to alert the council. I know you've all been following it very closely, but the Home Key project on Casa Buena. They had, we had our public meeting yesterday. They had the Board of Supervisors meeting today. The next Board of Supervisors meeting is on the 10th of November, where they potentially could make a decision. And so our last opportunity as a town to possibly provide a letter of either support or otherwise, but also maybe highlight any questions or concerns that we have for the Board of Supervisors to consider for the 10th would be at our meeting on November 2nd on this agenda. Staff is working closely right now based on everything we've heard. We also sat in and listened to the Board of Supervisors meeting today. We're working with county to see if we can get answers and clarifications. But again, we'll be positioned. I'll work through the mayor and the council if you so wish to, if it's necessary to agendize something for November 2nd. So for right now, I'm going to put a placeholder on it and assume that we are, but I will keep you all posted probably daily as we go forward because our community is obviously concerned.
Any other comments on this agenda? David? I think you're muted.
Unmute. Okay, unmute. The civil grand jury has reported on the county's actions and inactions on climate adaptation. And we've obviously been doing a lot in that. I'm hoping that we can agendaize a discussion. A group of us has, I think, some pretty useful suggestions, not just for Cora Madera, but for the whole county in satisfying the civil grand jury's ask to coordinate better across jurisdictions on both climate mitigation and climate adaptation actions. And so I'd like, I'd ask that we put that on the agenda before it becomes a full, let's say, a fully drafted response. And we're just picking a few words out of staff commentary. I will be sharing information with Todd and staff on this work that's been done, excellent work that's been done by some other folks across the county.
Just to that point, RJ, I know you're still on the call. What is our timeframe to having just our draft response? Would we have something by November 2nd? Or is it closer to the second meeting in November?
Yeah, we were thinking closer to the second meeting unless there was a push. So that was the prior thought.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, what I might recommend is that the council assign the vice mayor and possibly one other council member, if they're so interested to work with staff to work on our draft and have something for the second meeting in November. We still have a lot of time. This isn't due until December, but we're happy to do that as discussed earlier.
I'd be happy to do that and I'd be happy to be kept honest by another person side by side or solo, as you choose.
I can help as needed.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Teresa.
Bye, Teresa.
Bye, everybody. Bye. I'll be back. Bye bye.